I am going to call the meeting to order. And will everybody please rise for allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the
United States of America.
And to the republic.
Which is
which stands
nation.
One nation.
Under God.
The world.
Liberty and
liberty just for all.
We're gonna get better at sounding, you know?
Yes.
At the end it is.
We have to.
Right, the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure graduate of public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests with success are acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Starleture newspaper, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Present.
Mr. Shoner.
Present.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. Alright, well, uh, let's see, this meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. And I'm just gonna give that a moment to wait for the chat box. So that would be anything that's on this agenda that you can comment on, and then later on in the meeting, there'll be item, there'll be an opportunity to speak on items on or off the agenda. So don't think that this is your only opportunity to talk for those of you who who might not be familiar with this. Okay, so moving on. Uh, how is everybody doing this evening?
Hold it up.
Thank you.
Well, we're here.
That's, that's exactly correct. That's exactly correct.
Oh, I'm seeing a question about where to get the agenda.
Yep, I just saw that as well. Mr. DeVita, is the agenda on our website along with the budget hearing presentation?
Yes, yes, it's on the front page. If you scroll down to the bottom of our website, on the bottom, you should see something for tonight's meeting. If you just click on that, you'll see the notice, the agenda, and then also the budget hearing presentation.
Hi. Do you have any committee reports?
Uh, I do. So here's a APT report. So today, um, the APT celebrated the CGHS staff with a staff appreciation video with a sent to the entire staff this morning. Students and parents had the opportunity to make a video or send in pictures for the videos. The staff was really appreciative of all these, the kind words and the videos and the thought that went into making it. And they were also really happy to see the students. The project graduation committee is still taking orders for graduation signs for grades four, eighth, and twelfth grade. Many have already ordered. If you haven't yet ordered and would like to, please get orders in by May fifteenth. It can all be done contactless and payment via PayPal or check, but you need to order the signs if you want them by May fifteenth.
You know, Len, I just really wanted to, um, thank you for bringing that up. I really wanted to stress that especially even more so in this time of honoring our graduates to fourth, eighth, and seniors, that, um, if the public has as a child in those periods, that they could get those signs because it'll be great uplifting as you're driving around town to see, um, celebrating your child's graduation, whatever, which one of the three you're participating in.
I agree, and I also, I highly recommend if parents are interested in getting a sign, get your order in as soon as possible because as of right now, there's no talk about extending a deadline. And as we all know, sometimes things take longer to get than normal sets of circumstances. So even if you order these signs today, you might not get it as quickly as you would if it was a normal school year. So you gotta give a little bit of buffer time to expect that sign to come in. And if you wanna have it in time for graduation, we highly recommend you order now.
And you know, Michelle, we talked about this, um, and it's a great thing for the graduates. And, um, shouting it out loud on your lawn, your property, and also to have the volume honoring those three separate grades in this celebration.
Yes. Alright, does anybody else have any other committee reports?
I do not. Um, I know that the MMS FSA put together a really great, um, video with the students as well for the teachers, and I believe that there's a banner that was made and it's hanging.
It looks, it looks great, Nicole.
Yeah, it's hanging in the front and a few signs just saying, "We love our teachers" for teacher appreciation. I'm sure they're gonna be taking pictures of it and putting it out there for the teachers that don't live in town, but it's out there.
That's really nice.
Yeah.
So I attended the South End FSA meeting, the Zoom meeting. Uh, and it was nice, actually. There was probably about fifteen or so parents on the call, which was nice. Uh, Mrs. DiMatio especially, you know, wanted to talk about how she appreciated the parents and their support. And then obviously, you know, the virtual learning, it's been, you know, it's been challenging and it's new for everybody. And it, you know, it takes a village to make it work. And she said, "But everybody has come together." And, uh, and we did have a discussion about how it's really kind of been a, you know, a smoother transition than many other districts. And I know, obviously, you know, we all, some people have had their challenges and some people are doing better at it than others. But as a district, it's just very interesting to kind of see how we were able to mobilize so quickly, you know, not perfectly, but quickly into this virtual, you know, learning environment. Definitely, you know, not perfect. We've been tweaking it all along, but compared to some other districts, um, you know, I was really impressed. And so she had mentioned that as well, and so that was great. Um, they were planning a virtual bingo night just for fun, since obviously, you know, you can't get together in person. And then they were also planning virtual teacher appreciation. So that was South End. Alright, so if we don't have anything else, I'm gonna move on to board presentations. And Mr. DeVita, you'll be giving the board presentation tonight on the budget hearing, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that's also available on our, on our website where you, somebody put in the chat for the agenda?
Yes, yes, if you scroll to the bottom, then you click on the meeting date. It'll, it'll have the public hearing, um, budget presentation will be in there. There will be another link for that that you'll have to click on.
Great, thank you. Okay, you wanna go ahead and get started?
Okay, sure. Um, if you're looking at the presentation, if you go on to page two, this is, um, this shows some of the dates for when the board met to assess the budget. Uh, we meet as a finance committee first and then go over all of the requests from all of the principals and the directors. It's all put together, so it uses just the dates that we met to do that. And it's, everything is prioritized, and then, um, some of the cuts are made there. We had some, uh, public presentations. On March eleventh was the first one for, um, the social services department and the technology department. Uh, they presented on those that night. And on March sixteenth, the curriculum athletics and co-curricular activities and the building and grounds budget was presented. And the preliminary budget was also approved on that night. And then, uh, tonight is obviously the public hearing for approval of the final budget. Uh, the next slide, number three, uh, this is just a timeline for how the budget is prepared. September time, um, all of the budgets and amounts are all sent to all the principals and everything is put together by them, by the, um, directors and department heads and all that. They prioritize everything, then, uh, submitted, um, to the business office. Um, then it's, uh, paired together and reviewed with the superintendent. Um, then, uh, state aid figures, they were released on February twenty seventh. Um, we had an increase from last year. The numbers increased by a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. A little, uh, three hundred twenty-one dollars. Um, in the general fund and then our debt service, state aid increased by a hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Um, and then the, uh, the board approved the attendant budget on March sixteenth. And then the, uh, our preliminary budget received approval from the Essex County Business Administrator and Superintendent on March thirtieth. Uh, next slide, number four. Uh, this is just a breakdown of all of the expenditures in different categories. Um, it sort of shows a comparison from the current year to what's being proposed in the next year. Uh, the categories are instructional programs, uh, which this includes all of the salaries for all of our teachers, uh, any supplies or textbooks that are, um, used, also the basic field department, ESL, the media services, and instructional staff training is included in this budget. Uh, special education, uh, this includes all the salaries of all our special ed teachers and all supplies and any purchase services that's used by the child study team, uh, also our LLD program, our resource room, and our, um, pre-k disabilities program. Uh, and also, the majority of this budget is out of district tuition payments that are paid to, um, private schools. Uh, that is included in here, and then any services or therapy or anything like that, that's included here also. Uh, employee benefits, uh, this would include all of our, not just our health benefits to our staff, but also payments for social security, pension payments, workers' compensation, and tuition reimbursement, and any other contractual obligations that the board has. Uh, next group is, uh, student support services. Uh, this includes, um, all of our, the attendance department, um, all of our health and nurses, and the guidance department. Our administration, uh, this includes expenses for all of our, uh, the school administration, all the principals and all their offices, general administration, which is superintendent's office, essential services, which is the business office, and any administrative and IT in there. Uh, the transportation line, uh, this includes all of our expenses for, um, transportation, all of our regular and special ed transportation. Uh, then our co-tracler and athletics includes all the activities and for all of our, um, sports and any groups, uh, clubs and anything like that, operations and maintenance. Uh, this is, um, all of the custodial and ground, any security and capital expenses are included in here. Uh, our, and then if you look at those totals, um, we do have an increase from, um, the current year to what we are proposing of, um, just under eight hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Our special revenue fund, uh, this includes all the federal and state grants that we receive uh, from the state and also the federal government. Um, and this number usually always goes down every year. That means because you just wanna budget less than what you get the previous year, uh, but pretty much whatever money we receive from the state or the federal government, that's what we spend. Our debt service fund, uh, this is, uh, includes the principal and interest payments for all of the bonds that have been issued by the district. And the big increase here is because we have our first principal payment under the two thousand eighteen, uh, security referendum that's coming due this year. Uh, so if you add up everything, our total annual budget, uh, what we're proposing for next year is thirty-five million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars, uh, or it's an increase of eight hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred three dollars, uh, which comes to two point five four percent. Um, our next slide, five, uh, this basically shows all of the revenues that we're, um, getting to, to, um, meet the expenses. Our local tax levy makes up the majority of our revenue budget. Um, the, the number here includes a two percent increase that were allowed by law. And also, we qualify for some waivers. Uh, we have an enrollment adjustment waiver that's included here, and then there's some bank cap. Um, so overall, it's an increase of six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. And that, that, um, comes to an increase of two point four three percent of the tax levy. And, um, this whole, our tax levy makes up about eighty-eight percent of our operating revenue, so it is the majority. Um, our budget and fund balance, um, this is all of our unused surplus that have carried over, um, to the next fiscal year. Um, and this number is increasing going into next year mainly because we're using some of our undesigned surplus to balance our budget for next year. Our rental income is a lease payment that we received for the rental of our, uh, LRP to Essex Junior Academy. The social services, we also receive about seventy percent of our custodian salary, uh, from, from the Essex. Use that. Uh, our tuition, this is any money that we receive from residents, such as for the preschool program. Uh, we also have some out-of-district students that come from Verona and one from Glen Ridge. Uh, so that, that's that number. Our aftercare program with the YMCA, um, in our current year, uh, you see it's only sixty-four thousand. And next year, we're proposing, um, a large increase. Uh, that is, um, mainly due to because, um, the board's gonna be taking over the program for next full year. Uh, the YMCA will still be running the summer program if, if we have it. Uh, but then starting next full year, uh, the board will be taking over with, with our own board of employees. So we'll be making, uh, we anticipate to be making more profit while with that. Uh, next slide, number six, is the continuation of our revenues. Um, our interest income, that's all the money that we receive in interest from our banks, or all the money that's in our, in the banks. Um, missed earnings income, uh, this is basically, um, the money we receive for the, the E-Rate grant through the, um, the state or the federal government, um, any prior year refunds that we might get. Um, and also, uh, the big increase in here is our annual payment of Chromebooks that we, um, we get from all of the, uh, the parents. Uh, next is our, uh, transportation. Uh, we do receive some funds from parents that have students that ride on our buses that, that, that don't qualify for the bus thing. They pay a thousand dollars a year to ride our buses. Uh, rentals of our Billington Fields, uh, this number is anticipated to go up next year. Uh, we have been, uh, with our new, um, uh, facility, our, our field, and also our, um, uh, auditorium, uh, we have been having more, uh, dance competitions and, um, uh, dance recitals. Uh, so that, that is anticipated to increase next year. Uh, extraordinary, uh, this is the money that we receive from the state, uh, for sending special ed students out of district. Um, in our prior year encumbrances, you noticed that it's a zero for next year. Uh, this is basically all the peers that are incumbent at the end of last school year, uh, so June thirty, two thousand nineteen. Um, and any of those deals that get carried over into our new budget. Uh, so we're not gonna know what the number is yet for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year until after the audit is completed and probably around October or November. Our next slide, number seven, um, this is the final slide for our revenue. Uh, this just shows all of our state aid. Uh, it shows you the increase that I mentioned earlier, that hundred eighty-one thousand dollar increase that we did, did receive on that. Um, and then the other two, um, areas are, uh, remain flat. And our, uh, state aid makes up about a little over four percent of our revenue. Um, and also on here is, uh, we are, uh, last year, we withdrew some money from our maintenance reserve, and we're doing that again for next year, but, uh, for a little bit less than what we did. Um, and all of this maintenance reserve is funds that can only be used on ordinary maintenance. Um, so if you see here, this, our operating revenue is increasing by the same number as our expenses, and it comes to two point five six percent. Uh, next slide, uh, number eight, uh, just shows our total operating expenditures. Um, thirty-two million, six hundred sixty-six thousand, six thirty-three. Um, and then the next slide's going forward here, starting with number nine. Uh, this just gives a breakdown, a more detailed breakdown of, uh, the first slide that I did in the beginning. Um, this first slide just shows all of our instructional programs. Um, it shows it's broken down into each category, like our regular programs. Um, include all the salaries of our regular ed teachers, uh, basic skill, ESL, uh, the media services, uh, anything that we use in the, um, our media centers. Um, and instructional staff training is included here. Uh, so this shows the increase of being proposed to next year of three hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, next slide, number ten. Uh, this is our special education, um, part of the budget here. Um, it, it's also increasing. This includes all of our matter district. Um, tuition is included in here, um, any payments for any salaries of our, um, in district staff, um, any services that we have, um, such as speech, um, any OT or PT, um, any, um, you know, certain services that are used, uh, for our, our students is included in here. And then the child study team, uh, this includes all their salaries, any supplies, professional development, certain software is all included in here. Uh, next slide, number eleven. Uh, this is all of our employee benefits, uh, just gives the breakdown for what's included in here. Uh, social security, uh, that's all the payments that we make to the state, uh, for our non-certified staff, uh, such as tech paras and custodians. Um, our retirement contributions, um, this is, um, uh, also payment for non-certified employees, uh, that's paid to the state. Uh, workers' comp is all the premium that we pay for insurance coverage for all of our employees. Uh, tuition reimbursement, uh, this is all as per contracts, um, that we reimburse staff and, uh, for taking certain classes. Um, other contractual obligations, uh, this is basically any custodial uniforms, uh, any sick pay payouts that we have to do. Uh, that's all part of, uh, part of the contract. Um, and health benefits is the biggest, um, one in this category. Uh, we do have an increase going into next year. Um, we had another high claims history like, like we did in the current year. Um, because of that, the district will be moving into this, uh, school employee health benefit program effective July first, uh, for just the medical coverage. Um, there was a, uh, a big savings by, by doing that as opposed to, um, it ranged from, uh, what would have been a thirty percent increase, uh, as opposed to a much lesser increase, uh, going into the state plan. And our prescription dental coverage, they will remain with a private carrier. Uh, next slide, number twelve. Uh, this is our, uh, the support services, um, basically all of our attendants and all of our health services, salaries of all of our nurses, um, and our school physicians. And our amount is decreasing to next year because we do have a retirement, uh, one of our nurses is retiring. Uh, our guidance, um, this is all our, our school counselors. Um, and, uh, due to this, and this line for next year is our, uh, the SAC that we have in the high school. That salary is now included here, so that's the bigger increase here. Um, then our general administration, uh, school administration, central services, uh, these are all basically all of our admin expenses. Uh, we have our superintendent's salaries in here. Any, um, uh, fees that we use for, for the district, um, you know, paying, uh, Strauss estimate, which is our, does our policy book, any communications or dues that are included in here. Also salaries for all of our principals, vice principals, directors, secretary, uh, business office, and technology department. Uh, that's all included in here. Uh, next slide, number thirteen, is just continuation. Uh, we have all of our, um, support services. Uh, if, uh, sorry, our transportation routes, um, these are for a regular ed, uh, which we have four of those routes. Um, and we also have, uh, payments for all of our special routes for out-of-district students, uh, that's included here. Uh, we also, um, an amount in the budget for, um, we have to pay money to any parents that, um, where their children attend private schools. Uh, they, they get a fee of a thousand dollars paid to them, um, our athletic, and that's all, all the salaries, all of our coaches, uh, the trainer, um, any supplies or any conference dues or anything like that. Uh, we do see a bigger increase in this line because our, uh, with our ice hockey program that we share with the State Valley, the State Valley's numbers have been decreasing and student growth has been increasing, so that's causing our budget to grow to go up a little bit. Uh, co-traclers, all of our advisors in all the schools, and any graduation expenses and, uh, high school plays. Uh, next slide, number fourteen, is that operations and maintenance part of the budget. Uh, this includes salaries of all of our, uh, custodians, all of our, uh, maintenance guys, our grounds guys. Uh, that's all included in here. Um, and also, um, expenses for gas and electric for all of our buildings, uh, that's included in here. Um, any liability insurance is included in here. Um, and, and you do see a decrease, um, from the current year to, to next year. Uh, that's mainly due because of, um, if you remember, a couple years ago, the water damage that we had at the South End School and Middle School in LRP. Uh, that, that work was, um, it started in two thousand nineteen, twenty, and it wasn't completed that year. Uh, so, uh, payments went out in, in, um, in the nineteen twenty year. Uh, so that, that's why in the twenty twenty-one year, it's not included in there. So that's why you do see a decrease in there. Uh, next slide, number fifteen. Uh, this slide, uh, I like putting in, it just shows the, uh, a cost analysis of the whole budget. Um, I sort of like to break the, the budget into certain categories. Uh, personnel, the student, and another category, and, uh, personnel makes up the majority of the budget, a little over seventy-seven percent. Uh, this includes all of our salaries, benefits, um, any pension payments that are social security or contractual amounts. Uh, that, that's what comes to that, uh, a little over twenty-five million dollars. Um, our student expense, uh, comes to just under fourteen percent of the budget. Um, this is all of our, um, a lot of our special ed Indiana district payments, uh, transportation to get those students there. Um, and then the other category is, includes all of our, uh, energy expenses um, uh, for our, uh, any legal expenses that we have to pay for our attorney, uh, the auditor, um, certain fees like that. Uh, that, that amounts to just under three percent. Uh, so if you add up all those different columns here, that's up to thirty million, seven hundred eight thousand dollars. Uh, or that's ninety-four percent of the budget. Uh, that means that the remaining six percent of the budget um, i- is all of the categories that we have, um, to, you know, to basically cut. Uh, so, you know, any supplies or software, professional development, our facility repairs, our equipment, our athletic, uh, that's all included in the discretionary budget. Um, these numbers are similar to what they were last year. Uh, next slide, number sixteen. Uh, these are the estimated, uh, increases for next year, um, for the, the school portion of your taxes uh, for the average set home, um, in the district, which is four hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Um, that average annual increase is, uh, would be a hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, if you break it out to per month, it's fourteen dollars, eighty-nine cents, uh, per week. It's three dollars and forty-four cents, and per day is forty-nine cents. And, uh, this amounts to a tax increase of two point eight two percent, um, from what last school year to this school year. And, um, that's about it for the presentation. Um, does any board members have any questions?
Um, the only thing I wanted to point out, oh, thanks, by the way, this was, this was great.
Yeah.
We appreciate, uh, everything you do, Mr. DeVita. He's obviously on the finance committee with Mr. Shoner and myself. And, uh, and we appreciate all the work, um, that he does to kind of help us during the process and gather the information and then summarize it so you all understand it. So we appreciate that.
Um, thank you.
Couple of things I just wanna point out. Mr. DeVita said that the average household increase would be one seventy-eight, sixty-three. Um, just for a point of reference, last year, it was a hundred and ninety-six point seven-five. I didn't do the math to get me down on a per day, but it was more, so that's good. It's less this year, so we're happy about that. A couple of things that we were able to, to add in, we try to, to move forward, and obviously, it's trying to stay, obviously, in the, within the constraints, it becomes a little more difficult. And we try to think of different ways to obviously, um, increase our revenue, increase our expenses. But, uh, but we are able to add a robotics two class at the high school for, um, for next season, which we're very excited about. We were also able to do, um, some technology leases for new Chromebooks, um, PCs and smartboards. And we also did a textbook, um, lease for, uh, new math series and an ELA series. So I was happy that we're able to, uh, to move forward, which is great.
Yeah, it's really, it's really, it's really great within the confines of, uh, obviously, a very difficult budget. I mean, every year is, is hard, but in, within the confines, we were able to add and, um, work it so that we were able to give more to the district.
Right, and as Mr. DeVita said, we really, it helped that we moved, um, to the state plan for medical because otherwise, um, we would have had some serious challenges. So that definitely helped the situation.
And this is Nicole. I just wanna say that, um, this, this is just amazing work from, I'm not on the finance, the finance committee. And, um, I don't know how you guys do it. Every year, you work your magic, and it's honestly, it's magic. I mean, we have the best of the best working on our budget every year. And, um, I just need to say, like, I'll put my parent hat on tonight. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. It looks like this was so easy to put together, and Mr. DeVita rattled the pages off like it was nothing. This is a Herculean effort, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you guys so much for putting us in good standing and putting your best foot forward so that we can put our best foot forward.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a question in the chat about the budget, but we, although it would be just so easy to answer it, we're going to follow protocol. And when we get to the section where I say, does anybody have any comments on items on or off the agenda, then that question can, you can ask that question. So, all right, so any other further comments from the board on the budget?
No.
We're good.
All right. That's, I have to say, this is my ninth year on the finance committee and, and it gets difficult every single year, although it wasn't as, what's the word, cataclysmism. I can't even say.
Cataclysmic, yes. Well, you know.
Catastrophic.
Yeah. And last year, last year truly, the budget was catastrophic. And this year, it was still bad. I don't know if I'd use that word, but it was still bad.
Right. Right. But the fact that we can, you know, add some things and continually move forward is, is a true plus, so I'm happy with that.
At, at the end of the day, that's right. And I do have to say, and I've been on, this is my several years on the budget committee with you, Chrissy, and it's wonderful to have you there because your expertise in finance really lends itself to having, you know, having the conversation with you, me, the superintendent and the business administrator sitting down. It really, it just adds to the, the conversation so much.
Well, I appreciate that. Finance committee, it's the best committee to be on.
Says the CEO. Sorry.
Everybody's begging on the door to be on this one. All right. So if we're done with that, we're going to move on the agenda. And again, thanks, Mr. DeVita, and we'll be starting that budget process for '21, '22. So, all right, so moving on, from the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary Under Minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B3?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of the first, 2020. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers through the month of April. And B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B4 through B8, please?
So moved.
Second.
B4 is a motion to approve the addendum to the agreement with E-Rate Consulting and Process Management Services. B5 is a motion to approve the below resolution in regard to the district's school closure preparedness plan. B6 is a motion to authorize the updating and amending of the district's long-range facility plan. B7 is a motion to authorize submission of plans and required documentation for a new interior ramp at Cedar Grove High School. B8 is a motion to approve the agreement with Herf Jones to perform a virtual graduation ceremony for Cedar Grove High School, Memorial Middle School, North End and South End School. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S5?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve Dana DeTrizio, South End School Nurse at the rate listed. S2 is a motion to approve the following school volunteers. S3 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. S4, now S4 is a little bit different than what you might see in the agenda because it was modified, so I'm going to read the entire thing. S4 is a motion to approve an adjustment to the 2019-20 district calendar to reflect the use of three available emergency closing days on June 17th, 18th and 19th. As a result, all Cedar Grove Public Schools and Offices will be closed on this date, and we'll, I'm going to get back to this in the further discussion, I just want to get to S5. And S5, also a change, is a motion to accept the resignation of Michael J. Featherman, Superintendent of Schools, effective August 5th, 2020, after serving the district for 11 years. Discussion, and I'll start. So first of all, with S1, Dale Loman has been our nurse since I don't even know how long, ever since my kid started at South End, and she's retiring, and, and we wish her well. S4, it was decided as a board that we had extra snow days, so we, instead of having that Tuesday after Memorial Day, which traditionally we have done if we have an extra snow day, instead, we are going to, you guys already noted, the last three days of the school year, so school will end on June 16th. So there'll be school on June 15th and 16th, and 17th, 18th and 19th are now, we're done. And then as far as S5, we wish Mr. Featherman well, and we thank him for his, all of his years of service. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
No, sorry, go on, sorry.
Sorry. I was going to say, this is Nicole, and I just wanted to thank Mr. Featherman for all of his leadership and wish him well in the future.
This is Michelle, and I would like to do the same. Mr. Featherman, thank you very much for all you've done for the district and good luck to you and your future.
This is Len Splendoria, I'd like to echo everybody else's sentiment. Good luck, Mike.
And this is David, and I wanted to wish the superintendent good luck as he pursues his other endeavors.
Thank you very much, all of you. Much appreciated.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for, there's no motion.
It's going to be S6. S6?
Yes, it is. Yeah, I just realized, we forgot to put that wording in.
Oh, sorry.
All good. So S6 is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education as, as recommended by the Director of Special Services. Is that right there?
Is that right, Mr. DeVita? Yes, okay. So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No.
No.
No. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Ms. Miga.
Yes.
Ms. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. So this is the public's opportunity, if you want to make a comment, just in the chat, just say, I'd like to make a comment, and I will go ahead and unmute you, and then you just have to say your name and your address, and then you can make your comment. And I'll give it just a little bit of time for people to do that. Okay, so hold on just one second. I have somebody here, okay, so I have a couple of people, so hold on one second. Mr., I don't know if that's your first or your last name, Ameed, so just give me a second, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to unmute you first. And you are self-muted, so, okay, go ahead.
Hi there, it's Hua Jia Hameed from 23 Brunswick Road, Cedar Grove.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening. As well. I just wanted to ask, the first question I had was in regard to technology, you know, from looking at the budget, and I was reviewing, I'm an accountant myself, I wasn't able to really decipher the spending on the category of technology, and with distance learning, obviously that's becoming more crucial. We, you know, obviously don't know when we'll be back, the kids will be back in school, so, yeah, can you speak to like, you know, what the budget is and if there's an increase in that category?
Mr. DeVita or Mr. Featherman, do you want to take that question? And thank you, Mr. Ameed.
You want, want me to take that, Mr. Featherman?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you can start if you have anything.
Sure, yeah, in the budget for next year, as part of our program, we have started doing it in hopes of getting a one-to-one initiative with the Chromebook. This current year was the first year that we started doing that, so we got new Chromebooks for all fifth graders and ninth graders, so in next year's budget, we do have that, we're continuing that, that, that part of the budget, so all, we'll be getting new, about 300 new Chromebooks, and then we're doing this all as part of a lease, so the Chromebooks are included in that, and also we're getting some, some of our PCs that are older and a lot of the Windows-based computers, they're going to be not, you know, supported anymore, so we're going to be getting some new PCs for some of the district staff, and also some of our smart boards, they're aging out and they're starting to break down. So we're going to be getting some new smart boards for some of the classrooms, so all that is included in the budget for next year, and then we're just maintaining everything else.
All right, for that insight, regarding, you know, the whole distance learning, obviously it's been a challenge, you know, I'm sure everybody is trying their best to survive while working. It is quite a bit of a challenge, and I was at work full-time, and was wondering, you know, I've seen Zoom meetings being set up, if, you know, are there any best kind of practices or things that have been learned across the board from other districts? And I heard mentioning that, you know, we're doing better than other districts, but from touching base with other colleagues and things, you know, I'm, to me, there's definitely other things that are being done to make it better and experience the parents as well as the teachers, you know. Right now, I see a couple of teachers doing Zoom sessions, is there a plan for more? Or perhaps even having like, you know, parents kind of, you know, have sessions, you know, with more kids, especially for the junior level, like the North End or South End level, where, you know, kids at that age do require more assistance?
Mr. Featherman, want to take that one?
You know, how's the board thinking about that?
Yeah. Hi, Mr. Ramey, how are you? Hope, hope you and the families holding up well.
I'm good.
This is. Good, good, glad to hear that. It's extraordinary to say the least, so certainly appreciate where you're coming from. At this point, we are in the mode of taking a full inventory of the things that are working well and the things that aren't working so well. You know, we'd like to think we are nimble enough to pivot midstream here, but much of what we're finding, that needs to be fortified, will rely on professional development going forward. And so, as we're taking stock of what's working and what's not, we will be developing plans in the future to have, to have staff gather, share feedback and, you know, further develop the areas we're doing good at, and to fortify those that we think are lacking. And in some instances, some of the things we've tried haven't worked, and, you know, we're appreciative of the feedback from the folks at home. And so that's part of the process as well, identifying the things that we've tried that weren't so successful, and of course, moving away from those, and, you know, exploring newer areas that, as you've mentioned, other colleagues across the state are doing different things, and we're learning from, from those folks as well. So this summer, we have much to discuss, and I'm certain that when we come out of this, if it's September or some, at some point in the fall, we will have a better sense of what worked and what didn't. And if we're still in a virtual, you know, protocol, I think what you'll see on the other end will include things like more synchronous instruction, more video instruction, the kinds of things that help our folks at home, help our kids stay connected to the staff, to one another. So we're, you know, we're listening, we're taking notes, we're learning, and I'm real proud of how our teachers, you know, have, have embraced it yet, for sure. Some districts are doing a little better, for sure, some, some aren't doing as well, but that's, that's to be expected, given, you know, think about eight weeks of virtual instruction, unprecedented. But we appreciate the concerns and your feedback.
Thank you, Featherman, and thank you for your service over the last, you know, many years.
Well, thank you for that, much appreciated, truly is.
Okay, in the chat, I see that Mrs. Palamara would like to make a comment, so just bear with me while I find you, and I will unmute you. Give me one second. Scrolling, there we go. Okay, you just state your name and address, please.
Okay. I had to click the unmute on mine, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't. You were playing by accident.
It's all, it's all good, we're all, we're all learning through this process, believe me.
Kathy Palamara, 285 Ridge Road. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to thank you for putting together, it looks like to be a wonderful budget. I'm a parent of twin boys that are in second grade, they both receive, receive services in and out of district. I have one son that's in school in the public school system, and I have one that's out of district. So I just wanted to just say thank you for allowing both of my children to get the best education that they possibly can within the Cedar Grove schools. It's, it's not unnoticed, and I do appreciate everything that you do for us and for our family. And I just wanted to also wish Mr. Featherman well. I haven't really had much contact with you, maybe once or twice, but thank you for all that you've done for the children of Cedar Grove and for the past 11 years, and for, you know, just being available, readily available for parents as they needed things, and for the staff, and just also being part of the process of hiring wonderful teachers and staff members throughout the district. We're south, I'm a South End family, and I've just been so pleased with, also during this time, how much the teachers and Mrs. DiMaggio have done to help the littlest ones. I mean, my, my ones, my sons are in second grade, so getting them to go on a computer and do this work is mind-boggling to me, but just when I think I'm getting stressed as I'm teaching my own students, I hear their comments on Zoom, and the things that they say just brightens my day, because you just look at these little kids that are in unprecedented times, and it seems like that they're, they're coping the best way that they can. So, so thank you for all that you're doing for us, and, well, I just really wanted to say, so.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do really try, sorry, sorry, no, go, sorry.
No, go ahead, go Dave.
No, I just wanted to say thank you very much. We, we've been taking, we take the budget seriously, very seriously, and we also take, we're, we're taking, you know, not that we would not take anything seriously, but this is even more of a serious period of time, and I appreciate, I appreciate the comments. Sorry.
You're welcome. I'm an educator in another town, so we, it is, it is unprecedented times, so I can see, I teach older students, but just seeing these little guys go on, and these, and the teachers are just so enthusiastic, and, and it's just, I mean, I'm enthusiastic with my students, but teaching elementary school, I teach middle school, teaching elementary school is like a whole different world for me. And the comments that these little kids make and how they just seem so happy, and they're always smiling, and, you know, it's, it's just, you know, I just look at them and I'm like, oh, they're so sweet, and they just are trying their best, and it's really a credit to all, to all the board members and to all the principals and the teachers, and they're just going above and beyond, so thank you for all, for everything, so, you know.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Palamara, this is Lenny Splendoria.
Oh, so, that's all I really wanted to say, just something positive in like this time, so.
We are very appreciative of the positivity, absolutely, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I, there's another person who'd like to make a comment, so bear with me one second while I mute, this is Palamara, and I find the next person, bear with me. Okay, Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Jody Luji, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I knew, I knew you were going to struggle with that.
That's okay. I knew, I knew you were going to struggle with that. It's Jody LeJoi, 35 Cedar Grove Parkway. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. So Kathy's comment just made me think about something. And it had to do with, I got really excited when I heard her talk about the virtual, I guess, what I want to call it. It sounds like it's live instruction happening, maybe by her children's teachers. And I, I have not experienced that. So I guess my question is, is there, is there some sort of expectation being set that there be some consistency around live instruction across the different grade levels? Because I think, I think the experience is very different, depending on who your, who your child has as a teacher and how comfortable, you know, teachers are with the technology. I know myself, I would have a really difficult time doing live instruction. But I suspect, I'm just wondering if there's some sort of effort to have that be a little bit more consistent across the different grades and teachers. Because I think it makes a difference.
Mr. Featherman, do you want to take that one? And thank you, by the way, for your question.
You're welcome.
And I'm not going to attempt to say your last name again, but just thank you.
That's okay.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I'd first like to thank Mrs. Palamara for her kind comment and positivity. Much appreciated. Hi, Mrs. LeJoi. How are you? How's everybody doing at home?
You did it. We're doing well, but I want to congratulate you on pronouncing my name.
Awesome. Thank you for that. And thank you for commenting. You know, you're absolutely right. When we launched our virtual learning platform, we, we did approach it with the idea in mind that there'd be a lot of flexibility provided to our staff members, given that we've never been down this road before. So the byproduct of that is, just as you suggest, it's, there's a lot of different things going on in different grade levels and even in different schools, of course. If we had to do it again and maybe develop something differently for our youngest learners, I think you would see a bit more what we call synchronous instruction, that live instruction that you're looking for. You know, talking to colleagues across the state, the synchronous component seems to be the biggest bang for the buck. But it's difficult. You know, you've, you've got staff members at home trying to manage their lives, their, their children. So synchronous instruction is a high bar. But going forward, I think that you'll see more of it. It's what we talk about in our staff meetings on a weekly basis. You know, trying to encourage more synchronous instruction, more FaceTime with the students. It connects them to the instruction, it connects them to their classmates. We're aware of that. And, and yes, so there is a concerted effort to see more of that across grade levels while at the same time allowing our, our staff, you know, the flexibility to do things, you know, in their own creative ways.
Yeah, I mean, I can't imagine having to do that for three and a half, four hours a day. That would be near impossible. But, and I do want to acknowledge, I've seen a little bit of an increase over the past couple of weeks with the, the virtual interaction, even if it's just, you know, a quick chat to say hello and check in on how, how everyone's doing. I was just, I know some teachers are doing quite a bit more of that live instruction. And I, I can't help but think that there's going to be some level setting that needs to happen come September when you've got, you know, kids, maybe some kids got a little bit more one-on-one than, I don't know. I just feel like we're going to have to re-level set at the grade level come September. I'm sure you guys are already thinking about that.
Well, you're, you're being kind. Yeah, we're, we're thinking about a lot of things, for sure. And, you know, building a better mousetrap to connect virtually from home, you know, it's, it's a lot to wrap your head around. And as you suggested, some folks are just simply more comfortable with the technology, you know, more comfortable, you know, beaming out live, if you will, to the folks from their own home. So, you know, there's lots of little challenges that I think we're slowly, you know, overcoming. So I appreciate you letting us know that you're seeing a bit more of it.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. And I wish you well in your future.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated.
Okay, would anybody else like to make a comment? Just if you just make a note in the chat box, and I will go ahead and I will unmute you. I'll give it another second. All right, then I close that portion of the meeting, announcement of future meetings. Our next meeting will be May 19th. It'll be virtual, same time, same place. And again, for those of you who may not know, so we post the go-to-meeting link that you saw today. We post that on our, on our board website. So that's always there, a few days before the meeting. And then the next meeting will be June 12th, which is just crazy. Again, virtual meeting, again, 6:30, Executive 7:30 to the public. Any board members? Any last comments or anything like that?
I just wanted to, you know, once again, thank Mr. DeVita for everything he did with the budget, helping us through this process. I mean, you know, I know, Mrs. Dai, it's never an easy thing. And, yeah, so I just wanted to thank him again.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion to adjourn our meeting. So moved.
There you go.
Fantastic. Roll call.
Mrs. Dechara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
And Mrs. Dai.
Yes. This meeting has ended. Everybody have a good night and stay safe.